Do you want to just pull that agenda from that? I didn't pull the agenda.
I have. All right, good evening, everyone. It is 4:00 PM and I'm calling the Select Board to order. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. On Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Announcements, I will just remind everyone, if you happen to be watching this, maybe you should just shut it off and get ready and head on down to the library because the library's 20th birthday party takes place at 5:00 PM this evening and it's going to be a great event, so you should consider going. Public comment, is there any public comment from the board this evening?
No.
Any public comment from the public? See if there's anyone on Zoom. Nope, not seeing anyone. All right, moving on. Old business, discussion and vote on special, town meeting warrant and booklet. So we have a couple that we left for today, but we're just going to run through it all and make sure we get everything. Once I find it. So many copies now. Here's the one I'm looking for that I annotated. Okay. Article 1, Authorization to Hear and or Accept the Reports of Officers and Committees of the Town, it's included, and recommended approval, 5-0. Article 2, Amending the Fiscal Year 2026 Omnibus Budget, we voted to include and we voted to defer and that should stay that way. Article 3, Authorization to Pay Expenses from a Prior Fiscal Year, same thing. Oh, we do have a bill now. Haywood Hospital, an amount of $266. Okay. Article 4, all right, so this is the one that we have not voted on yet and it looks like it was merged. It's just the Stormwater Consulting, an amount of $42,900 and we're using an expended capital project to pay for it. Okay, so I will move to include Article 4 in the warrant. No, we didn't.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes 4 to 1. Do you want to tell us why you didn't vote for that?
Just. And this is just for the funding of the consultant for the stormwater?
Mm-hmm.
So that's essentially helping establish the process to implement the stormwater utility fee? Is it? I'm just concerned that overall the solution to the stormwater issues is, you know, another example of the lack of funding, appropriate funding from the state. You know, so this $42,000 doesn't go to address any specific issues or problems, it's specifically to basically build up this, yeah. So it just seems, it seems like we're spending $42,000, an additional $42,000 to, for a foregone conclusion that there will be a stormwater utility fee? You know, if these were funds that were going directly to address, address a problem, you know, I'd feel, I'd feel more, more comfortable.
Okay.
So just to be clear, this, we just voted to include it in the warrant. This is not whether to recommend approval or not, this is just to put it in the warrant so it can be discussed at town meeting.
Right. So we potentially could spend $42,000 on a consultant and then not adopt a stormwater utility?
No, this article could go, it's in the warrant, it would be voted on at town meeting and it could be voted down. That's the whole point of town meeting, right?
This is just to put it on the warrant, not that we recommend it or not?
We have two votes, one to include articles in a warrant and then the second vote is to whether we recommend approval or not.
Yes, I guess I just, I guess I just struggle with actually, I'm fully in favor of it going on the warrant, that's not what I'm saying.
That was, that was, that's what I'm saying.
I apologize. I was on the recommended side of this.
So what we can do is we can revote that and then we can vote to recommend approval.
Can we figure out why we have so much feedback in here?
Yeah, to the booth, we're getting a lot of feedback in here, so maybe if we even just turn the volume of the room down a little bit, I think that would work. Yeah, I shut mine off. Renee shut hers off, so I think it's more than that because we only have one on right now.
Maybe that one is.
Yeah, it might be the podium. Is there a way to shut that off? I don't actually know.
I think she just did because now it sounds better.
Okay. Thank you, all right, it sounds like we resolved that.
Thank you to the booth.
So we can just revote that. So should we just do the same motion or should I?
Can I make a motion to reconsider?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously, now I will move to include Article 5, 4 in the warrant.
No, we just included it now.
We haven't yet.
We have to re-vote it because.
Oh, because we just reconsidered?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. Was there a second?
I will second.
Did we have a motion to?
I moved.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so motions are made and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, so 5-0 to include, and now I will move to recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes 4 to 1. Okay. Article 5, Public Access Cable Committee Transfer of Funds, and it looks like it was updated, so the only one here is the transfer of some of $35,271 now.
Yes, so there was the $31,271 that they had attempted to transfer at the, at the annual town meeting, but the retained earnings were not certified as of yet, so this basically replicates that vote to effectuate the vote that was intended at the annual town meeting and there's a $4,000 additional appropriation from the retained earnings for videographer or for additional videographer funds. This just kind of, the language here that was being changed cleans up the way that we're passing the money from the retained earnings to the enterprise and excludes the general fund.
Okay, I will move to include Article 5 in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously and I will move to recommend approval for Article 5.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Article 6, Cemetery Commission Transfer of Funds Included and Recommended Approval, 5-0. Article 7, Authorization to Fund a Sum of Money for Project Estimators Included, Recommended Approval, 5-0. Article 8, Establishment of a Special Education Reserve Fund Included, Recommended Approval, 4-1. Article 9, 41A Property Tax Deferral Included, Recommended Approval, 5-0. Same thing with Article 10, 21 Main Street Easement. Article 11, Transfer the Care, Custody and Control of Kids' Kingdom in the land it is on from the school committee to the Select Board Included, Recommended Approval, 5-0. Article 12, Notice of Town Meeting, same thing. Article 13, MBTA Zoning Act Compliance, it was included and deferred for their public hearing that's going to be on Monday. Same thing for the next one when I get there. Yep, Article 14, Removing the Two-Minus Concrete Requirements from Common Driveways. And now Article 15, Amendments to the Salary Administration Plan SAP, Position Titles and Grades. I'm not sure what we got for feedback on this one, was there really much?
Just instead of putting the asterisks in the grade column to move those asterisks right next to the title and leave the grade blank and then instead of just saying "subject to an employment agreement," Labor Council added, "Provided that the other terms and conditions of employment for said position shall be subject to an employment contract in accordance with Section 70-30." So it just clarifies that and I added to the summary the following language, "The article also creates the position of Special Assistant to the Assessor Temporary. The Board of Assessors have," I need to add, "the Board of Assessors have received directives from the Department of Revenue to complete prior to the next full reevaluation in 2029. One of the directives is to review all residential neighborhood delineations in accordance with land value and then adjust them as needed prior to the next certification. Consideration should be given to conducting a neighborhood study for all residential parcels and market areas. Neighborhood 3 and the waterfront neighborhoods will need to be annually reviewed and refined by assessors. This special assistant will assist the town in working towards compliance with the DOR directives."
Okay, is there any discussion on that? I will move to include Article 15 in the warrant.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, Article 16, Salary Administration Plan Amendments. Sorry, what? Oh, did I not? Oh, my bad. I move to recommend approval for Article 15.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Article 16, Salary Administration Plan Amendments, Changes Other Than the Personnel Committee. So the biggest thing here that Labor Council added was language for the vacation time, so let me just get it.
And while you're pulling that up, Mr. Chairman, so the way that this article will read in the, in the mailing is that to see if the town will vote to amend the SAP as shown on a document entitled "November 18, 2025, Special Town Meeting, Article 16, SAP Amendments Relative to So-Called Fringe Benefits or Indirect Provisions Such As Holidays and Vacations With Pay, Sick Leave and the Like Dated October 27, 2025, on File with the Office of the Town Clerk." So that's the language that will be included here, but that the handouts on this will be available or the, the actual language will be available on Monday in the office of the town clerk and probably not until the end of business, but will be available and filed on Monday and will be available online and will be available via handout. So those 17 pages of text that's over here that we're going to go through won't be here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the vacation time is 70-18, are we all there?
So are we not going over the comments in the sections?
We can't, I just wanted to start because this was like the biggest thing here, so I just wanted to start with that. But yeah, we can go over all of it. Okay, so there's two parts that were added really to address how this is actually going to happen, so the first part in the beginning, so "All changes to Section 70-18 shall be effective July 1, 2026, as to employees employed by the town on or before November 18, 2025." So anyone already employed by the town at the time of special town meeting. It shall apply upon hire to employees hired after November 18, 2025. And then if you go to the next page or two pages from here, J, it looks like, so "To effectuate the transition from the prior vacation leave benefit to the accrual-based vacation leave system, any vacation time earned and unused as of July 1, 2026 shall be converted into a one-time vacation bank. Employees shall be required to use at least one-third of their bank time during each of the following three fiscal years," so FY '27, FY '28 and FY '29. "Bank vacation shall be used in accordance with town policies. All employees with a balance over 120 hours as of June 30, 2026 shall receive a lump sum buyout of all time over 120 hours. The bank vacation shall be maintained as a separate balance and used prior to newly accrued leave in any given fiscal year. Provided employees may combine the last of their vacation leave from their vacation bank for a given year and accrued vacation leave from the given year to cover a single block of time. Employees may request and the town manager may approve, subject to the availability of funds, to be paid for a greater amount of their balance as of June 30, 2026. Any remainder shall, as detailed above, be banked in three equal increments for FY '27, '28, '29 unless the employee and town manager agree that the bank time shall be used in a shorter period of time. Beginning July 1, 2026, employees employed on or before November 19, 2025 shall begin accruing vacation on a monthly basis as outlined above."
Now, this is the same language from the police contract, is that correct?
It's a little bit different. It's mostly the same. The biggest difference is that it gives, if, it gives the authorization subject to availability of funds that we can buy down the whole bank if we want.
Yep, makes sense without having to cover shifts and everything else.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Do you know, do we have a lot of folks over 120?
No. The ones that are are retiring.
Gotcha.
Next week.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like there's any.
Not all of them, but most of them, just to be clear.
And if anyone were to leave, we pay out the vacation, any vacation that's in the bank.
Oh, yes, that's required by law, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like there's any issue with that. Are there any other, Renee, I know you wanted to, are there any ones in particular that you wanted to cover?
No, I haven't had a chance to look at it at all.
Yeah, so.
So do you want to?
Yeah, so.
Go through some of the other ones here?
So.
I just see a lot of comments.
A lot of it's technical, that was.
Some, a lot of this is technical, so, but let's go through just so folks feel comfortable of where we are because this document, I'm going, there were a couple spots where Labor Council, I don't think quite understood what we, what the objective was and needs to tweak the language around that, but, so the first change he made under job descriptions and interpretations, we had added new language that said, "Job description shall be reviewed at a minimum upon the exit of an existing employee," and then he just added the language, "and before the town seeks to fill the vacancy," so that it's clear that there's a window there. In Section C, under that, it said, "Annually, the Human Resources Director shall make recommendations to the town manager and the Select Board regarding annual cost of living increases for consideration at town meeting." His comment here was that the, the traditional functions of the Human Resources Director do not take into account the town's overall financial picture and so that this should change to, "Annually, the town manager shall make recommendations to the Select Board regarding..." So that's the change there, if folks are good with that.
Yeah, I mean, that means that we would be approving it before it goes to town meeting for approval essentially, or at least.
It's, it's just, it's requiring that annually, it, sorry, it's requiring that annually we're at least making recommendations so that even if it's, the recommendation would be zero, that that would happen every year.
Presumptive.
Exactly. It's ensuring that it's presented and considered.
Does it, consideration at annual, do we, do we put at annual town meeting?
Good, good catch. Yep, thank you. Okay. He had a comment on a section that we weren't changing that I don't think we should go into at this point. So Section 70-11, this is where he did not understand what we were trying to do. So I need to ask him to redraft this to accomplish the mission, which is if you are on a grade and you get a promotion, that when you, when you move to the next grade, we're going to take into consideration what your step increase would have been that year and move you one, at least to that. So there had been situations where people potentially were losing money, so he didn't quite capture that here. I think with a conversation, he can fix that and I do not think that the board would need to vote again on that if you are in agreement with the concept as long as we find that it's accurately captured.
That's fine, I'll say.
That's both an A and C.
Yep.
Okay. In 70-12A, you see a lot of comments on the side that are actually quite simple. It was a back and forth between he and I. So this is language that, "In the event that the Personnel Committee does not have enough members to conduct business, the Select Board shall have the authority to administer this provision of the SAP." And then in the next article, there's a potential that town meeting is going to dissolve the Personnel Committee, so how to handle that? And he basically indicates that you would handle it in the motion of the next article, amending that next article, if that makes sense.
Yep, makes sense.
And then these deletions and changes that he have, he has in B and C, I do not think that they're necessarily warranted or should be included. It's historical and I don't know why it would be striking it, so I need to ask him that.
Where, which ones?
70-12B.
I just don't see what he struck there.
There's no change.
He struck, he struck the date.
Is it C?
It said, "Effective July 1, 2015."
Oh, so C.
And then he made part-time A and part-time B bold for some reason, which that's, this is, this language should have been left alone, so I got to ask him why he touched it.
Okay.
But I don't think that those should be touched.
Okay.
Okay. He added some clarification language around the grievance procedure. He actually recommended that we remove this language entirely, but in the first paragraph where we explain what the goal is and how we would like to see grievances settled informally, he, he added the language, "The preferred method of addressing grievances is informally," he added, "with the employee supervisor." And then he, he gave just mostly a rewording in B to make it more clear about the timing, but it, the 10 days was already in there. Any questions about that?
No.
No.
So how do we leave it with the, if your grievance is with your supervisor? That's in B?
If the employee is not comfortable discussing the matter with their department head or if the matter is not settled, then they go to the HR director.
Okay.
Okay, on the next page, that's a rephrasing of the sentence, just a change in order. And then the chairman had already talked about most of the changes in 70-18 to paid vacation. There, you see a strike through in Part A about employees being capped who are part-time A, that just moved lower where we talk about the caps for other employees. And he suggested that when we're allowing folks to take vacation time in the red, that we require approval of the department head and the HR director based on, you know, wanting to approve that liability. And then in the E, you see where he moved that part-time A cap down to that section. That's just a movement. And then the chair already talked about Section J.
Remind me, part-time A, part-time B?
There's a cutoff for the amount of hours.
It's the hours. Yep, so.
Is it?
Part-time A is employees working regularly scheduled, fewer than 20 hours per week, and part-time B is, in other words, considered a full-time employee or benefited employee is between 20 and 36.
Part-time B is between 20 and 36?
Yep.
20 kicks and benefits?
Some, yep.
But it's called part-time?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a little strange.
I almost thought about changing this from part-time A and part-time B to full-time A and full-time B and then I said, "Let's not confuse everybody."
Okay, thank you. So, all right, we have some technical things that are still being worked out.
Oh, no, we're still going, hold on.
Are we still going?
We are.
Where are we?
We're on page 12.
Oh, you're right, okay.
He struck some language that he felt was superfluous in E about being able to, being required to be in a paid status on the day before and after a holiday in order to be paid for the holiday. We had had clarifying language in there. He, he believes that it's unnecessary because of the term paid status. Julie believes it should stay for clarification to employees. Is there an opinion of that red language that he struck at the end?
I see what he's saying, but I don't, I also don't see the harm in leaving it.
Right, just so that it's very clear.
Is the, the black bold that's crossed out, that's?
That was, that was me, that was the strikeout for me.
Okay. So I'm just reading the red strikeout.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it can stay.
Yeah.
Keep for clarity.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I do have a question about the sick leave benefit. There's no ramp-up period. I believe this is going to have that similar preamble language that says, "Effective July 1, 2022, for all new employees, for all employees currently employed." I need to check with him on that because I was expecting to see that date language here.
And what about the consecutive days of work, did that, three consecutive?
I think he, I think that that... Do you know what section that was?
E.
Thank you. So those, he did not make any changes to that section.
I thought we had wanted to change that.
Yeah, was it the three days?
Because it would, otherwise if they call in sick, three days within the year.
Yeah.
Oh, consecutive.
Three consecutive.
Thank you, Glenn, thank you.
And more housekeeping, but it makes reference to a doctor's certificate and a doctor's note, like the last sentence starting with "for the protection of." And just a comment, I, I think that's wholly inadequate, like.
Where, where do you see, where's the certificate?
So for the protection, the town department head or supervisor may require the presentation of a doctor's certificate.
And then the last sentence, it says doctor's.
Doctor's note.
Yeah, I don't even know what a certificate was.
Yeah, so let's make that note, note.
And I, and I, just a comment, it's still fine, but three days is, I think, inappropriate, too, too short.
I don't disagree. I do think that's like across the board.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
But I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Especially in the world of COVID and everything else.
It's, I know it's true for us, but it's at the discretion of the supervisor.
Yeah.
Right.
They require it.
That's kind of what gives me the concern, like you could have an employee that overshares their health and people won't ask them for a doctor's note and someone who's very private won't and they might get, they may get asked for a certificate. I, I feel with sick days, like if it's 15 days a year, it kind of has a built-in checks and balance system in of itself, like if you use them all, you're really just penalizing yourself, but I just, I just think, I think it leaves, the three days leaves it open for like a disparate kind of application of that. You could pick and choose an employee, but anyway, that's, we don't.
That would be illegal.
Well, I, well, that's what I think that opens up to, is just three, three days is, is, is sure, that might, we can think about that down the road, but I'm, I'm still in favor overall.
No, I get what you're saying, though.
But, so for now, we're going to change certificate to note and three consecutive?
Yes.
I'll have those. Okay. All right, almost done with this. On page 15, he just clarified the definitions around non-exempt and then exempt on page 16, and that is all.
Okay.
So I will reach out to Attorney Terry about these questions and clarifications likely over the weekend and I'm expecting to connect with him on Monday and then I will incorporate them and put them on the document that's on file with the town clerk. As a reminder, if there are things that are minor in nature that we want to change between now and town meeting, we can do that in the motion.
Yep. Gotcha. Okay, any other discussion on any of this that we want to have tonight? All right, so I will move to include Article 16 in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously and I will move to recommend approval for Article 16.
With the changes we discussed?
Well, it's not really in, yeah, that's fine, with the changes discussed tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Just so this board is aware, I did present last night to the Finance Committee and I told them that there would be a financial impact of this article, at least in terms of vacation time, which I'm going to codify for them before their hearing.
Okay.
So I'll share that with you all when I have that number.
Great, thank you. Okay, Article 17, Salary Administration Plan Amendments, Personnel Committee.
All right.
What was Labor Council's review of that?
So there was only one change, oh, this is printed upside down, half upside down. He didn't even redline it, he gave it to me over the phone. Okay, on 70-8, Salary Schedule. Okay, on seventy dash eight, salary schedule. On bottom of page five. I just had, that language was not struck in the original, and I asked him what it even meant, and he, he just said, so that's the change, that's the only change, is that language being struck between now and the last time.
But unless otherwise authorized?
Yes.
So there's really no changes that?
He did not have any changes to this, other than that.
All right, cool. Any questions? I will move to include Article, sorry.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, thank you.
Did we have any other?
Sorry, go ahead.
Second, but, do we have any other questions from the first time we discussed this?
No.
Okay, no?
Not that I've been tracking. All their questions were from the other article, the actual SAP changes.
No, because we've got everything from DLS.
It probably would have been from, from it.
Huh?
If there was, it probably would have been from you, but maybe it was just the other one?
No, it was just the other one.
So this one similarly would have a document on file with town clerk, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Special Town Meeting, Article seventeen, Personnel Committee, dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, which we'll also put online, and I don't think I had a summary written last time for you, so this is the summary largely from the beginning of the kind of like white paper type document that I had put together on personnel boards, but just including, "Across the Commonwealth, towns are sunsetting personnel boards and committees and consolidating HSR authority under a professional management in HR staff. This shift improves compliance speed, reduces fragmentation, clarifies accountability, and aligns with modern labor law and risk management. There has been sustained action in this area rather than a one-off trend. Financial reviews by the Division of Local Services, DLS routinely flag personnel boards and committees as a duplicative and unnecessary bureaucratic layer, and DLS has commented that towns are ultimately best served by having a professional manager who can develop and oversee a full-time structured personnel management program, and this approach recognizes the growing importance of and risks inherent in personnel issues. Handouts on this article will be available at town meeting and available online in advance of town meeting."
Great. I'm going to be nitpicky, can we capitalize town?
Where?
Towns in the summary, across the Commonwealth, towns, I just like to say capital.
When it's plural?
Yeah, that's what I was.
The, the town, the town.
Yeah.
Lunenburg, the town is capital? Town, town and towns is lower.
Oh, there's a distinction when it's plural, you don't capital.
Well, no, it's about whether you're talking about the proper town.
I see, okay. It just looks strange to me.
It's like saying dad versus all the dads.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I don't know why I just said dad, but I did.
Gotcha, that's fine, okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Movements are being seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, so I will move to recommend approval on, I forgot which one it is again.
Seventeen.
Article seventeen.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Nope.
The motion passes four to one.
Okay.
All right.
So we didn't vote to recommend approval of sixteen, right?
I'm, yeah, we did.
Yes, we did.
Yep.
I vote.
I thought it was just to include.
No, I did both.
You did both.
Are you sure?
Hundred percent.
Did I miss it?
We can vote.
I know, yeah, we did.
Okay, because I didn't write it down.
We can do it again if you want.
It was unanimous.
I didn't write it down. I'm trying to fill in my sheet.
I know, my sheet is so scratched up now at this point.
Yeah, I know, that's part of the problem.
Okay, so that's the warrant in its entirety. We have the booklet here too, with the index.
Yeah, so I just, I just pointed out the pages that were not, the warrant gets shoved in here.
Right.
So I need to update the index as much as we can. And then there is an updated letter from the chair with the vacancies as present. I included a little something for me to explain that the handouts in addition would be available, and that documents on file with the town clerk will also be posted online, and a reference to the public hearing of the finance committee on November thirteenth, and that just apprising voters that final recommendations by the select board, finance committee, and other boards may be made up to and including town meeting night, and encouraging them to attend. And then there will be at the end a handout on Stormwater to meet one of our MS four compliance requirements by mailing something to all the voters.
Great, all right. Nothing really in there to review, so, all right, we went through the warrant, and it's pretty much it, unless there's anything else anyone needs to say about this? All right. Upcoming meetings, we are meeting November fourth, and then special town meeting is November eighteenth. Is there any public comment from the public? Not seeing anyone, no one else is on Zoom. Any public comment from the town manager?
No.
Any public comment from the board?
Nope.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. It is four.